Let me try to find my seat. Fairly comments from the public, we're able to listen to those. Okay, we'll move on. You want to alter that, a copy of the minutes from the meeting of October 3rd? If you agree with them, I need a motion to accept those minutes.
Make a motion to accept them.
Second.
Discussion. All who's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion is carried. We'll move to bills, any additions or deletions, Mr. Treger?
We have one addition tonight, it's to business, current amount of $3,141.29. That includes wastewater treatment plant operating training expenses for Danny Gay, vancom training expenses for the clerk and treasurer, IEP meeting expenses for trustee Arnold, and wine safety school for our two wine whippers.
Okay. I have a motion to accept.
Well, I got one.
Well, we have, we gotta get a motion before we start discussing.
Okay. Make a motion to pay bills.
Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, Mr. Arnold.
On page number three? No, sorry, page number six. Jay Hogan, $1,700. At $21 an hour, $21.50 an hour, that comes out to 80 hours, he was here for two weeks.
I, let's ask the treasurer.
That's what I figured, it comes out to, I don't know.
Can you hear that on your head?
Yeah. Well, I think, I hope it is.
Let's see.
Twenty-one fifty.
You wanna know the number of hours we were billed, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
But you have it on, on your bills that lists that twenty-one fifty an hour, it's got a total of seventeen twenty. Is that all labor, or was there something else involved, or?
No, there's, there's, it's all listed there separately, it includes five gallon pail and something, and.
No, there's separate amounts for that, other.
Yeah, so twenty-one and a half, twenty-one and a half hours, eighty dollars an hour.
Oh, eighty, okay, that's how many hours you were, that's not what you're gonna do, that's eighty dollars an hour, for twenty.
Oh, for twenty-one, I was gonna say twenty-one dollars an hour, that's awful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Twenty-one dollars an hour for twenty-one dollars.
Oh, okay, alright.
Twenty-one and a half hours.
Alright, okay.
Thank you for clearing that up, any other questions?
I have a few.
Okay.
Our sent under uniforms, our uniform provider for the village employees, these bills that are in here under, under each department, what do those comprise of? What, how much of time periods do those bills cover that I'm looking at? For the rental and cleaning?
Those are the yearly allowance.
That is a yearly allowance?
Correct.
Okay, 'cause it was thirty-five hundred dollars worth of bills, and I was hoping that you weren't gonna say that was for like two months or something.
No, it's yearly allowance.
Okay, thank you very much, and let's see. Also, our sent, we're leasing a, a new copier.
Uh-huh.
But I see you've got something on your here for maintenance, what maintenance? Are we doing that under a lease?
That is, there's a per copy charge that you pay, so much for black and white, so much for color. And we are paying less than what we were paying.
Right.
Previously.
Okay, thank you. Also, New York State Division of Homeland Security, or it's a loan repayment, what's that, or?
That is the.
Just a refresh base.
That's the bond payment on the fire truck.
Okay.
I don't know where you are with this.
That's all I have, thank you very much.
Okay, any further discussion or questions? All who's in favor, main general?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion is carried. Uh, Madam Clerk, we have any correspondence?
No correspondence.
No correspondence, okay. Well, under, the agenda of, remember what I did, well, my agenda under meeting is update on the walking fitness trails, so I'll ask our recreational leader to give us that brief update.
Thank you, I'm Jan Treel, and we held our grand opening ribbon cutting ceremony for the walking trail Saturday afternoon at nine PM. Members of the Clinton County Health Department attended, as well as the mayor and I. Approximately fifteen children participated in a youth fun run organized by Molly Flynn from the Clinton County Youth Bureau. The participants received apples donated by Shazie Orchard, water from Coca-Cola, and back sacks from the health department. Their donations were greatly appreciated, and it was a beautiful day for the event, including lots of smiles and lots of enthusiasm from all of those that were attending. We have many thanks to Mr. Arno and the several volunteers that came out in September, the rec center workers and the village crew for spreading the linoleum and dirt along the trail, there's still some topsoil to be delivered and spread, somewhere around two truckloads, I'm guessing at this point. The new benches were out for people to see and enjoy for the day in the afternoon on Saturday, they're now in storage until the cement pads are constructed for permanent installation, we're just waiting for the cement to be ordered and delivered and have it put out there. The frames for the pads are already built. There's a balance of $2,873 from the original health department grant from that original $30,000, and that'll be used to help cover the expenses of the extra topsoil if we need it and cement. The IOE, online campaign that we had started in the end of August and ran through September was a success due to the generosity of so many of our local community members, for which we are extremely grateful. We exceeded our goal and raised $11,135. The committee is currently looking at fitness equipment from various companies that we plan to purchase over the winter and receive it for, in spring and March, hopefully when the ice is out, so the guys will be able to store it here and put it together, and we're looking for installation of that in 2017, spring. So, you have any questions? Feel free to ask.
Heidi, do we have to spend that grand money from the health department by the end of the year?
Ideally, they had wanted the project to be finished by the end of the year, but the project is basically finished, so now we're just tidying up the soil and cement.
So we can carry those funds into the.
I think, so yeah, we already have the money, the money's in our account, so.
And we're gonna use that to pay for the cement pads?
As we need to, yes, the cement pads in the sort.
Okay.
If we need it, so.
Ma'am? Any other questions, guys? Thank you, ma'am, appreciate that, thanks for your hard work and this, and success. Okay, let's just review our fall cleanup days. The dates on those are Monday, October 24th through Friday, October 28th. Residents are requested to bag as much material as possible and place at curbside by 7:30 a.m., in such a position that parked cars do not block the pickup truck. Residents are reminded, this collection is for pickup of bagged clippings in clear bags only, leaves and brush and tree limbs not to exceed three inches in diameter only. This will be the only time the village group will be picking up clippings, leaves and limbs this fall. Next pickup will be held in the spring. The compost facility, which is open to our residents, will be used for leaves and bagged clippings only, no limbs. There was a question last week when we mentioned that notice about this, our cleanup is on the electric rail, I should've said utility bills, so if you're not an electric customer, but you get water and sewage, if you look on your utility bill, there's a place that says special messages, and underneath there you'll see October 216 calendar events, and then list the fall cleanup days, so everyone will be notified, whether or not you're an electric customer or not, if you're a utility customer, and you will be, excuse me, in the, in the Village of Rousas Point, you're gonna be reminded, it's on the sign out front, it's been in the paper, so I don't think, will it be in the paper again, or that's a one-shot?
I sent it in again to the press, Republican, The Sun, and The Islander. It's also on our website, signed at the library, on the sign here, and at the village office.
Okay, so, hopefully that will, that will get, get out there. Alright, also, last week I was approached by some members that were in the audience after regarding New York State Electric and Gas franchise that is within the village's limits, and they wanted to, the, these particular people wanted to know why they couldn't get Village Electric, and I told them that NISIG had, was not willing to give up that franchise, and they were questioning that, saying, NISIG told them that it was the village that didn't wanna give anything up, or. I did a little research with the help of our village clerk, and found several pieces of the correspondence, I mean, dating as far back as 1988. Just a quick sentence out of this particular letter from '88, "The village may serve, in that portion of the," this is from, excuse me, from NISIG to Rousas Point, "The village may serve in that portion of the next area aligned northerly of the southern boundary of the lots on the south side of Smith Street, and is prohibited from rendering electric service in the area lying southerly of a line extending along the southerly line of the lots on the south side of Smith Street to the end of the next area." So, what that's referring to is the lots that are on Smith Street on the south side, they're all double lots, and then there's another area behind that that was a next, but it's not in the, maybe in a corporate limits village, but it's in the NISIG franchise, so it can't be provided there. And then I have several other pieces of correspondence, from NISIG, one is to Mayor Rivers in 2002. It says in light of, or, "NISIG has no interest in selling or divesting any of our electric distribution facilities," that was a request for, to do that. We have one from February 2003, which the mayor sent to NISIG customers, "We have tried to solve this problem, as you can see, NISIG is refusing to relinquish their franchise to our municipal franchise." And again, in 2008, they reconfirmed that NISIG's position with respect to our franchise boundaries, the Rousas Point area remained unchanged. I think we beat this horse to death, they don't wanna change it, they're not gonna give it to us, it's unfortunate, but for now, unless something changes, that's where we're at. Do you guys have anything you wanna say about that?
I remember one time, Tom Batho, when he was there, and he tried to take, change that over something.
No, that was in ninety-four, ninety-six, spoke to him about that. But, I mean, we have, you know, we have documents, this has been tried, and.
Well, quite a few times.
It's just not gonna happen, I know it happened a long time ago.
Can we send copies of that, or invite the Mr. and Mrs. McManus to come to the village office, so they can view that for themselves?
I didn't mention who asked me, but anyone, anyone that would like to see it, more than welcome, and we'll make it available to, to view.
They seem to sparehead things for Columbus Drive and things like that, so I mentioned them specifically.
Okay, thank you. Alright, uh, next thing, we'd like to talk about the electric rate survey that we talked about earlier. When I mentioned to you, the auditors told us that we were losing 3.1%, so our rate of return was minus 3.1% on our electric utilities, it's supposed to be plus 3.4%. That rate is set by the Public Service Commission, and why the fact's been over thirty years since we've had a rate increase. The procedure to begin that process is to authorize a rate study, and the company that did the audit also is the one that IEP's representative, who advises us, said we should go to. There's a flat fee charge for the rate filing that's submitted to the Public Service Commission, the pricing is usually in $16,500 to $17,500 range, and after it's submitted to the Public Service Commission, this company, that the auditors will work with us on an hourly basis, after the rate filing is submitted, the Public Service Commission does an in-depth review of the rate filing, and the assumption used in the rate filing, and submits questions to the village. In many instances, these questions can be answered by the village, and as such, our firm is not needed, however, in some instances, it would be more beneficial for our firm to answer those questions, inquiries. The thing that is unknown is how many inquiries the Public Service Commission will make. Some rate filings have seen quite minimal inquiry, while others have had significant inquiries. In a recent rate study we did for the village of Fairport, the village treasurer and superintendent were able to answer all the PSC's inquiries. The costs of the rate study are covered by the new rates, the PSC makes you advertise these costs over a three-year period, so you'd be made whole after three years, and additional electric funds should pay for the rate study, out of existing cash balances, which, which we have. So, if we're gonna proceed on this, we need to authorize, have our treasurer and contact this company, and it usually takes about two years for every, all this thing to be done, the Public Service Commission, for rate increase.
But, on the, you talked about the rate increase, but what about the incremental power? That's, that's altogether a whole different.
Yes, we're talking about a rate increase for our base rate here in the village.
Right.
Not the supplemental.
Right.
So, in order for us to.
But I mean, you know, back when we weren't getting incremental power, I mean, we had pretty cheap power and stuff like that, but then all of a sudden they started giving us incremental power, and so we start, our incremental power is more than what our light building.
So you're saying just what we charge for kilowatt?
Yeah, we can't, we can't change those rates, but we don't have anything to do with those. But, our, our rate per kilowatt hour would be, is what we would like to raise. We could also potentially raise what we charge for a meter, we charge $1, which is, and that hasn't been changed in, I don't know how long, more than thirty years, I think. And, you know, if, if we can see a couple dollar increase in that, not a couple dollars, just a couple dollars, then, you know, that, that would help too, but the study would, would show us where the increases should be, and we submitted to the Public Service Commission, and, you know, based on their guidelines, we're, we're behind the eight ball on this, and we need to catch up. Even though it's an accounting loss, it's an accounting loss of $400,000 in the last two years, it's from depreciation, at some point we're gonna have to replace some of the stuff, some of the trucks and other things, and although we have a large cash reserve, we're not, if we stay at the rate right, we're not, eventually we're gonna run out, and it takes two years to even get approved before. So, I'd like to have, I would like to have a motion to, to proceed with this, with this rate study and have it submitted to the Public Service Commission.
So that's a $16,000, we're not the game, about.
Right, between sixteen and seventeen thousand, which we recover with the rate
It's been how long since we raised our electric rates?
Last year, I had a rate increase in 2003 and 2008, I don't know if they've had one since then, but they've been trying to keep up, and the Public Service Commission, their study was a lot more expensive, it was, you know, this is relatively inexpensive, and this company is very familiar with our rate structure, because they just did the audit, so it should be, it should be an easy. We can't move forward, we can't do anything, if we don't do that, I mean, this is a requirement of Public Service Commission to have this done first. You can't ask for a rate increase till you have an authorized organization do the rate study, and submit it to them, then they ask questions.
Do they, would they come up with the increase, or we could decide?
Public Service Commission comes up.
So what if they went to fifteen cents a kilowatt? That's better off, to leave it alone?
No, they can't, they can't do that.
No, they, they can't do that, they want, they will bring you to where you get a rate of return of 3.4%, we're at minus 3.1% now. So, they, they will only bring you to where you get to 3.4% based on, on the rate they set. So there's not gonna be any astronomical increases, you know, it's gonna be.
I'll look into it a little bit more before I, I don't know enough about this.
I'd like to find out if they say, it's three cents, you just say three cents, do we have to go with it, or can we save on?
No, we don't have to go with any, but I mean, if we, if we're paying for this rate study, and we can recover those costs with the rate increase, you know, again, if we put it off, it's, it's two years, so the more you put it off, all of a sudden it falls away, that's why it's been thirty-four years, because everybody's been dodging it, but we're losing money. It's a fact.
Well, if it's been thirty-four years, a couple of more meetings isn't gonna hurt anything, so we can do a little research. At least I can familiarize myself with it, before I make the motion table till the next meeting.
Well, nothing's up, nothing has to be tabled, it's, it's a discussion I brought for you, no motion to be made, so if you guys wanna talk about this after we've done your additional research, this is the same thing that, that I talked about three meetings ago, and I just happen to, I now have the company that can do it, so this isn't a new topic, and.
I don't know what's in this, I mean, so I don't.
Just wanted to talk about the cost.
I agree, we gotta find ways to diversify, to make more money.
No, fine, we'll put it on the agenda for.
The next meeting.
The next meeting? Do we have a tough time here?
Yeah, 'cause that's, that's about seven or something.
Yeah, seven, yeah, okay, but that's what we'll do.
I mean, in all due fairness, it's the first I've heard of it tonight, so.
Absolutely, you gotta, what, that's what, that's what we're having discussions for, so I think that makes perfect sense, you're not gonna wanna try to make an informed decision unless you know all the facts, so we'll, we'll put it on the next agenda for discussion. Okay, now we have discussion of village and town justice court consolidation. There was a question if we consolidated the courts, and that would be, again, just to review that quickly, review. Village residents pay taxes to support the village justice court, village residents also pay town taxes to support the town justice court. The town has to maintain the justice court, the village does not. A formal consolidation, which means using just the town, is a way, a cost-saving measure for the village. The residents are already paying taxes to, to support that court, and it's a town-wide tax, it's not just tax on Rousas Pointers or Champlain Villages, it's town-wide, both villages and outside villages pay for this, so it's spread out over everyone in the town to cost of the, of the town court. If, and there was a question, if we agreed to go along with this consolidation, what would happen with the records that are here? And we received a information from the Office of the Justice Court Support, which says, active records will be transferred to the Town of Champlain Court, inactive records remain in custody of the village, the village clerk becomes the records manager, the village clerk is responsible for providing case disposition from the closed cases stored with the village, the record retention is responsibility to the village clerk who follows the retention schedule, which is online. Unfortunately, there's no formal training available for any village clerk to manage the court records, and the Office of Justice Court Support recommends that the village clerk meet with the current court clerk to become familiar with that file system prior to the, that court no longer existing, and that would be at the, at the end of the current village justices' term, which is in the end of March. That would be when the court clerk for the village justice court would also retire. So, that's, that's where we are on that, if, we've had a lot of discussion, you guys have any more thoughts on consolidating these courts? We went over the fines for vehicle and traffic, then remain with the town, the, the village is not entitled to any revenues from that, except for parking violations, and one other violation, which doesn't occur very often, so you're not gonna generate any revenue, which you're not gonna have any cost either. If you remember, the total cost for a judge and a clerk was around $76,000, revenues from the court were about forty.
Forty-five thousand.
Yeah, so there was a $31,000 cost after the revenues taken away, so that would be, that would be the savings, and, so it's, what do you guys, any thoughts on this? Should we proceed with this consolidation, or what, what, what are your thoughts?
I think we had a lot of discussion on that, you need a motion?
Well, I wanna make sure everybody's agree with, you know.
Like I said, the clerk would have to take over, take over the old files, correct?
We have, only the current act, open cases go to the.
Right. The clerk would have to take care of.
The clerk, yeah, has to, in other words, when somebody comes down and says, here's John Jones, who applied for a job, and he said he was issued a speeding ticket to Rousas Point, what's the disposition of that case? So then, she would go, go out, file, make a copy of it, says, you know, this, he was, you know, yeah, he, the case was dismissed, or he was fined $50 or whatever, you know, it's usually for backgrounds and things like that, that people get those. But again, the records are still gonna stay, if they don't stay where they are upstairs, then they would have to be moved to another secure location, but keeping in mind that they have to be accessed, so.
They gotta stay in the village.
Yeah, they gotta be available for, for the, keep the records to be able to go find something if there's a, there's a request. I mean, usually someone will come in with a release from that individual, when they're doing a background or something, they're just trying to verify what was submitted on the application, make sure the guy from the court records, so. But, again, it's a, it's a, it's an easy cost-saving measure, and, and it avoids having to pay taxes on two different courts. So, you know, we could, we have a motion to consolidate the courts, which would be, in that way, we have to notify the board of elections by, you remember, I think.
Seventh, well, twenty-first.
Twenty-first, so the seventh will be the last meeting that we could vote on, the next meeting, or we could do it now and have it done, and, and move forward, so. Does anyone wanna make a motion on those lines?
I'll make a motion that we consolidate courts, and if feasible, abolish the village court system.
Village justice court.
Village justice court system.
Okay, so we have a motion that we abolish the village justice court and consolidate that, those activities with the town justice court. You have a second, or not?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion's carried, so Madam Clerk, you can proceed with that, but as far as the board of election goes, we'll go from here. Okay, thank you, next item? Okay, motion to adopt local auto or rising tax levy, tax levy limit established in general municipal law section 3C. As you recall, we, in order to fund the emergency medical service, next year, we require a payment of $75,000 to, to Champlain Moore's EMS. We've discussed that this will require a tax increase of approximately fifty-nine cents per thousand, and with anything else, it would probably, it will put us over the 2% tax gap. So in order to, in order to do that, we need a motion, as I just stated, and the attorney, if that passes, the local law motion passes, the attorney drafts the local law, the copy of the draft law and the notification that's happening is published, and no sooner than seven days after that publication, we have to have a public hearing to review everything about that, and once that is over, we may adopt that local law, and it is good for one year only. It's not like, from that point on, we can override the tax cap, it's for one year only. You may have seen in the paper, there's been a couple, or at least one filing, it was the town of Ellenberg recently, our treasurer found one for this year from the village of Walden, who's also doing it, and it's a local law to override the tax levy, tax levy limit established in general municipal law 3C. So, in order for us to proceed with that, and to take care of the, basically taking care of the EMS portion of our obligations, we need to do this.
Good question.
Yes, sir.
The fifty-nine cents per thousand, with the original, whatever it is, the charge per thousand for the ambulance service, also be included in this fifty-nine cents? I think I asked this question before, you said yes?
The ten thousand, you mean?
No, that will be an extra.
That'll be extra.
Carson, do you know what we're paying per thousand now for ambulance service, and?
No, I don't.
Okay, I thought it was around eighty cents, no? Am I correct, I say that to be an extra on top of what we're already budgeting?
I think it should be said that, that regardless of this local law, the board can pass this local law to override the tax cap, that, that gives you an option, but that doesn't necessarily mean you have to do that.
Thank you.
You know, you could, you know.
I, I should've.
You could save, you know, you might be able to save money somewhere else where, where you don't have to.
For instance, if we decide, as you said, if we. For instance, if we decide, as you said, if we decide that the fire department, because the ambulance's not gonna be used as much, doesn't need as much in next year's budget, you know, we might save some money on that. If we find some other savings, we may not... This, and that's a good way to put it, this opens the door and allows us, if our battery is low, we have to exceed the two percent cap. We don't want to.
I'm assuming the original amount's gonna drop anyway, since we won't be putting any money into an ambulance reserve. Divide new ambulances.
Why wouldn't we?
I don't know.
This is a year-to-year contract.
Well, I thought they were providing the ambulances.
For five days a week.
Oh, so we have to provide them under this present contract?
Yeah. We have to plan it, and we're giving, we have three EMTs that are in training now. Hopefully, they come out. I mean, we can, the contract that we're establishing, just like we did for the ten thousand dollars, can be terminated after thirty days notice to meet a party. So if we were to come up, if, you know, we had five critical cares move into the village, we could terminate that contract in thirty days, you know? So it just gives us, it primarily assures that the residents are, you know, have the protection. So, and this gives us the opportunity, if we need to exceed the tax cap, to do it. So I would like a motion to establish a local law to override the tax levy limit established in general municipal law three C.
Make the motion.
You have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion's carried, so we can move forward with that, Mr. Treasurer, if you'd... Or I guess Madam Clerk, you're in contact. You did everything, don't you? Sorry. Okay. All right, getting down to item number five. Remember, we talked about a memorial bench that was being, the parents of a young man who lost his life in a snowmobiling accident. They had a memorial bench constructed, and they were looking for a place to put it. They initially wanted to put it down here, and they've asked to put it along the lakefront by the, by the Ross's Point Pier now. It's a change in, certainly a change in venue, and where they wanna put it is, you know, that whole area was designed with, you know, one thing in mind, the bench is replaced, it was all planned out, and I'm not sure if, you know, we could, we might be opening the door by establishing a memorial along the waterfront, if we could have more and more of it. We have a memorial site down here already, which overlooks, you know, the civic center and the field. It, you know, in discussions with various people, they thought that that would be an appropriate place. There's gonna be a peace photo down there. We already had one memorial down there. So what are you guys' thoughts on this? What do you wanna do?
We agree. Here, correct.
Civic Center, down in the water park. What do you think?
I think they can put it wherever they want. You're gonna have more people sitting at the lakefront than you are up here in the field.
Well, exactly, but it's a bench with, with, you know, a saying and a picture as it edged into it, and it's a visible memorial. I mean, like I said, I don't know if, if you think that's an appropriate place for...
Well, I got sent some pictures by email from June where they wanted to put it, and it seemed like it would be an appropriate place to me. They're gonna do their own concrete, carry it.
We can always look in the future for if it's an aesthetics problem, somebody else wants to place a bench that has a saying, you know, it probably wouldn't be a good fit at that time, but I agree, I'd like to see that family be allowed to put that bench where they've asked.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Traumatic, a man on the subway.
I guess he liked the water and stuff like that, the kids did and something. I think it should be placed where they like, yeah.
It's not like the trivia for that. I think we'll notify them, and they'll go ahead and put it there. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. All right, finally, we need a motion approving a reduction of hours for wastewater treatment personnel from twenty-four hours a week to eight hours a week. We know the employee that we have been, we have been utilizing for this is now retiring, and he's agreed to work eight hours a week, which he's allowed to in his retirement. So we need a motion to do that, to reduce those hours to eight hours. He's gonna continue to provide the CAD drawings that he does, and I think he's gonna work both for the Department of Public Works and the wastewater treatment plant both, so.
I'll make a motion to reduce the hours from twenty-four hours to eight hours per week for the individual that we are speaking of.
Okay, we have a second, or not?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion's carried. Turn it over to Trustee Moore.
I have nothing.
Okay, Trustee Moore?
Yeah, we have a letter from the fire department, a document, did you read that?
Sure. It stated October seventeenth, two thousand sixteen, "Dear Mayor and Trustees, we wish to inform you of two new members who have been approved to our company for a probationary period of six months, Kevin Butler of Ross's Point and Leo Wagner of Ross's Point. Please act on these members, and we thank you for your time in this matter. Respectfully yours, Dennis Roberts, Secretary."
Thank you. I'll put it in the form of a motion to accept them.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's carried, thank you, Trustee Moore, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, Trustee Arnold?
A letter from the library board. Library Board of Trustees have authorized Susan Sullivan to apply for a grant through the New York State Division of Library Development to replace the missing mortar and damaged bricks on the library building. In the grant application is successful, we will be responsible to cover twenty-five percent of the cost, approximately fifteen hundred dollars. The cost will be paid to the building and repair appropriation account of the library annual budget. There will be no need for the village to provide any additional funding if it goes through.
That sounds pretty good. They're gonna need a grant for repair, just as much power about the mortar and the bricks and stuff.
Right, yeah.
And they're gonna be able to use that fifteen hundred dollars out of their own budget, and that to, for their twenty-five percent of it, so that's...
It's a little braver.
Yeah.
That's great. They don't, we don't...
That's if it goes through.
You do, it's part of the grant, you have to have a motion.
Yes.
Okay, you wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we go along with this grant for seven years.
Okay, there's a motion that the library board be allowed to appropriate fifteen hundred dollars for twenty-five, cover twenty-five percent of the cost of the grant. And we have a second as well. Further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion's carried, thank you. Anything else? Nope, all set. Okay, Trustee Darke?
Yeah, I have one thing. As the mayor stated in the last few board meetings, we're gonna be going into uncertain financial times, possibly a financial stability problem with the impending closure of Pfizer. With that, I'm sure this board is committed to finding savings in our operating plan to try and ease future cost of service increases. In discussions I've had recently with the chief of police and the village administrator, the chief of police has agreed that a current opening of a part-time patrol officer doesn't need to be filled at this time. He would like to see that it gets filled on a seasonal basis, based on warmer weather activities and increased traffic in the village. The next time the board could consider filling this position would be early, late April or early May of two thousand seventeen, thus rolling over the next six months of funding of this already budgeted position back into the general fund. And this has been discussed several times with the chief and with the village administrator.
Do you have any comments?
I'd like to talk to the chief myself about it, I mean, just...
I talked to him today. He said, he said that, he said during the winter, he thought he could get by without it. I said, "Well, do you have an applicant available right now that's qualified?" He said, "Yes, could hire somebody right now." And, you know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna gain alarm, but I don't wanna compromise any safety that we have for the village residents for the sake of, you know, a twenty thousand dollar savings. We have, when we have that part-time guy, we have seven-day, at least a police officer on duty seven days a week. So I think that's important. I know specifically, the major things that are up right now are in the village and have exceeded anything in the last ten years with domestic violence calls. They've been in the news, people, they're very dangerous calls, and, you know, we don't... I think we should have as much police coverage as we possibly can, and we have it budgeted for this year. If there comes a time when we have to eliminate it, it's gonna be, I think it's gonna be tough, but that's just, that's my two cents. I think that we have to keep safety of the residents paramount. I think we gotta keep that up front, just like the EMS, I think the police coverage is just as important, and so, you know, it's not a case of, well, we wonder if we'll be able to get somebody, if we're not, we've got somebody ready to go now, can put on a uniform and be in the car in a week, so.
And it's already budgeted.
It is already budgeted for this year. What do you think, Junior?
We already advertised for it, correct?
Yeah. We have the application, that's how I know there's somebody available.
Is Sarah told the next book down, see why not? Keep it.
Well, I, I believe that you, if you wanna make a motion, Tom, you can do it. If you wanna continue discussions, trying to maybe figure out a way to, you know, maybe how much, how much do you project for savings for this?
Whatever would be left in the budget, which is, Carson's gonna have to help me on this. I was told a figure at one time, but follow her. Beyond time after that...
Twenty hours a week times whatever is that, is...
Yeah, twenty times twenty is, you get twenty dollars an hour.
Police officer part-time gets sixteen dollars and seventy-one cents an hour.
No, we're paying the other guy twenty dollars and sixty cents.
Well, the start for a part-time police officer, as of six one twenty sixteen, according to contract, is sixteen dollars and seventy-one cents.
That's the minimum.
That's, that's what a police officer is, a corporal, a police corporal makes twenty dollars and seventy-eight cents, but a police officer part-time makes sixteen seventy-one.
Have this guy been interviewed or anything, or is he...
We're still accepting applications until Friday.
We still gotta wait for the applications to come in.
So sixteen seventy-one times the rest of the, you know, times twenty dollars times the rest of the year. You got any ballpark for us? Come on, you got, you're the accountant. I just want that movie.
Well, we still gotta interview, we still gotta wait till Friday anyways.
Well, I know, but Trustee Darke has put something out there that we need to consider. I mean, we need to know what the numbers are.
Yeah, it's supposed to arm for eighteen dollars or twenty dollars.
Well, well, I don't know why we should pay many more than this says, it's the country contract.
Based on experience. You don't have to send them to training or anything like that.
Well, if it's a part-time police officer...
That doesn't make any difference, money's got for training or nothing. Gets sixteen dollars an hour.
That's the minimum you can pay them.
Right. His full time, no, that's, that's...
Right, the contract.
You don't have, you have the rate, I believe, doesn't it say in there, you have the rate to...
Who can't hand you less than? Todd was in his second year, perhaps, maybe that's why he was making a move.
He's listed as a corporal. If he was paying that amount, it says corporal is twenty dollars and seventy-one.
We paid him more than the starting salary.
Yes, we did, yes.
But we did do.
Well, I think we need to have a number out here from...
The village reserves the right to hire a level higher than entry level provided the new hire has previous experience.
That's not, we're asking how much money we're gonna save. We're not asking off the rules, we're asking about how much money we're gonna save.
We don't know, we're paying him.
Well, I'm saying we're gonna pay the new guy the amount that says in the contract.
That's whatever, and we may not get him, we may not get him by you for that price with the experience.
It wasn't advertised, I don't think I had any...
No, I'm just saying, if we interview whoever it might be, and he says, "Well, I need eighteen..."
Well, I guess the question is, how much savings do we have if we just don't fill it as Thomas suggested? You know, it's a cost-saving measure. I think we should know how much we're saving, and if...
Well, that's then, and I agree with you, but it's not fair for you guys to put me in the spotlight like this.
No, no, I'm asking Tom, cuz Tom brought it up, I thought he would have that figure.
No, it's, it's three hundred and thirty-four dollars a week times whatever the number of weeks left in the budget year.
Okay, there you go.
At sixteen seventy-one. I don't know how many weeks are left in the budget year, I don't have a calendar on me.
Somebody's got four, whoever's got four, and we've got one more right here, nine weeks to December thirty-first.
It's budgeted till May thirty-first.
Yeah, so...
Correct.
You got a calendar? Well, you know what, I think we need to have some more information, gentlemen. We need to know the amount that's gonna be saved, how it's gonna go.
I'd like to talk to the chief myself.
Maybe you'd like to talk to the chief myself. I think you should, maybe by the next meeting?
Absolutely.
Bring that up, bring it up forward, and we can go with that. So I think we can...
Continue with the interview?
Well, we haven't done any of the interviews yet, but we could do them, but...
Yeah, that case is gonna be in by Friday, so.
Yeah.
This week's done.
You, do you think we should go ahead with the interviews, or wait until we make a decision about whether or not we wanna fill it?
Oh, absolutely, you should go ahead with the interviews so we have a plan B. That's the prime thing to do.
Okay.
It's, then we can make up our mind.
We don't have to make a hire, we at least should know who's available and what, if we even have it applicant.
Right, and this person, you know, once we, you know, you decide you're gonna go with it, which you probably will, it'll be, you know, you're gonna do a little vetting process on this person too?
I was just handing the calendar tonight. If you start with the week of November first, there's thirty-one weeks left in the fiscal year. At three thirty-four is ten thousand, three fifty-four.
There you go, ten thousand, three fifty-four.
At sixteen seventy-one.
Yes, sir. Okay, so you guys are gonna proceed with the interviews, and you're gonna bring that up at the next meeting, Mr. Moore will be able to, Trustee Moore will be able to do things, and you can, any other additional items you wanna bring forward, okay? All right, also, we have, there was a question that has come up about the water department. We haven't filled that position yet. Are those, I gotta ask you guys, are you scheduled those interviews yet?
Yep, just scheduled for this Thursday. First one, we're interviewing four people. First one starts at eleven o'clock AM and goes straight through one.
We, just for you guys, from the twenty-third of September to the fourteenth of October, we've spent two thousand four hundred and thirty-one dollars in overtime, when that position's not been here. And those guys have been working, they had twelve-hour shifts, and they're getting pretty tired, but if we would've had the position filled, it would've cost us for that month two thousand nine hundred dollars.
And what's hurt us a little bit too is, you've had some training going on, so it caused unnecessary overtime. It was like four days of training, I think.
We're still, what I'm saying is, we're still four hundred and seventy-three dollars under what it would've cost to have an individual on the job.
Yes, right.
Primarily because the monthly cost for health insurance is, for the individual, six hundred and eighty-three dollars, right? So that's what it cost us for that.
Yeah.
And so salary, salary and the other thing was only twenty-two hundred, but when you throw in the health insurance, we actually saved four hundred and seventy-three dollars even though we were paying the overtime. You know, I think it's been a good fill-in, but I think it's starting...
That's why you guys take vacations.
Yeah, somebody takes a vacation, somebody gets sick or whatever. Okay, great, thank you for that. Do you have anything else, Tom?
I do not.
Okay. All right, then, we will, do you have any other reports? Start with Mr. Pauski, you have it at the board?
Just finishing up our projects. We're gonna be tying over the Smith Street Water Line tomorrow morning, and that project will be coming to the end. And the electric department be energizing the Chapman Street line hopefully by Friday. We'll start something.
You got those already pulled, all that stuff's done?
All the wires pulled on Chapman Street, we're setting transformers today.
Great, that's moving along. Okay, Mr. Treasurer, you have anything else?
The only thing I have is to remind anybody who hasn't paid their taxes, October thirty-first is the deadline before it's turned over to county.
October thirty-first deadline to pay taxes, or it goes to the county. Thank you. Madam Clerk, anything else?
I have nothing.
Okay, you'd like...